Okay, I call this meeting to order. It is six thirty four, November the third. And all due roll call. Mayor Protam Villa Long. Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Styler.
Here.
Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Gleis. And if you would join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And then if you remain standing to the invocation.
Dear gracious heavenly father, Lord God, we are just so grateful for the rain that you have sent us. And heavenly father, we just thank you for this beautiful little city of Martindale. Lord God, as we go forward to, uh, to pass laws and so forth, we just ask that you be with us and give us wisdom and discernment, Lord God. And we just most of all, thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
And we pray for the Astros. The whole city of Martindale is behind them and we're wishing them the best. Amen.
What a series, huh?
Oh, strove.
Okay, and we, uh, now have public comments. Would you sign up for public comment? Oh, they're there. You're right.
Okay, reminder, mostly I thought you already voted. Uh, the last day for early voting is tomorrow. Uh, precincts three hundred to three oh one, go down here to Three Rivers Church. And tomorrow is just from nine AM to six PM. Uh, then the general election, of course, is Tuesday, November eighth, and that's seven AM to seven PM. If you voted by mail, then the ballot must be received, not postmark, but must be received by five PM at the elections office. They're saying November ninth. I don't trust them. I would make sure I get the ballot mailed in early. And who knows about the mail? Okay, um, not on, um, there's gonna be a Medicare Medigap information session set for next week on Wednesday, November the ninth, uh, four to four thirty or later in the library. Uh, and the gentleman's just gonna give the general information about the different parts of Medicare and what Medicap, Medigap means. Uh, and December the seventh is the deadline decided for Medigap or to make any changes in your current plan. And there's a lot of people that, that get Medicare, and you don't have to necessarily be age sixty five. Us old people will have it though. Okay, uh, seed planting is scheduled for Saturday, November twelfth, from ten to twelve. And, uh, the library received a grant from Navy Seeds to purchase a bunch of different mixes of seeds and wildflower seeds, plenty of city parks. Uh, there's been a delay in ordering the seeds, so I don't know if it, is it gonna be here in time? We'll find out. Uh, and the Phi Gamma Delta fraternity boys will help provide some labor for that. And the seeds that are ordered are specifically for this environment. Okay, the downtown tree-lining event is gonna be Friday, December the second. Uh, and right now the plans are for Santa to drive through all the neighborhoods on the fire truck. And there'll be gift bags given out for the kids. And there's letters to Santa. Uh, and if they wanna fill out their little Santa letter, they can drop it in the drop box there in front of the library. Yeah, and the downtown tree-lining is, the actual lighting's gonna be about six o'clock. But anyway, adults can gather down here downtown earlier than that. Uh, we've got, uh, children's activities, also a bunch of adult activities and, uh, different. We've been doing lots of planning already. And the city, we're having a joint meeting next week. Gotta find out what day works for y'all.
So you don't have a day set?
Yeah, the tree-lining is December the second.
Okay.
But the planting, I gotta work out with these people. They're busy. We are too. Okay, uh, the December movie series is gonna start, uh, December first. Yeah, December first is on Thursday. Now, these are Thursday movies. Uh, got Ranch's first one, Smoky Mountain Christmas, Airplane Thirty Fourth Street, and Christmas Story. Those are December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Oh, yeah, I have one. Okay. David Murdoch.
David Murdoch, uh, mayor and council. Thank you for letting me, uh, say a few words here. I'm here to, uh, support an action item that's on the agenda tonight to adopt city ordinance that would, um, implement a ban against engine brakes on trucks traveling through the city. And I've got a personal interest in that. I'm the one that talked to Mr. Russ. They got the, uh, item on the agenda. I live pretty close to Highway eighty and, um, I'm routinely, uh, disturbed, even woken up at night by the gravel trucks and other trucks using their engine brake on the highway. And that's, uh, something they don't have to use. It's just convenient for them. I think it basically saves a little bit of wear and tear on the brake system. Um, so I wouldn't imagine, I mean, I don't think there's opposition to something like this on the council. I just wanted to take a chance to explain why it's on there and, uh, say that I think it would, uh, it would help not just need, but improve quality of life for a number of people that live along Highway eighty or, you know, within your shot of Highway eighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabrina Jennings.
Hi, I'm, yeah, taking my mask off while I speak. I'm Pastor Sabrina Jennings. I'm the director of CORN, which stands for Community Organization Reaching Neighbors. I'm Gloria Carlo and the community worker for the, um, hey, I'm Ashley Garcia. I am the administrator. And I've got some questions. So let's go over, um, what we've done. We were previously the Vaccine Action Collaborative. We started, um, in response to the COVID vaccine rollout and helped organize clinics, um, including ones that were held here two doors down. Um, and we had, you know, really good success partnering with lots of organizations and different groups all around the county and even in San Jose, Bashiop, and Guadalupe. Um, so y'all can look through that. But what we're, we wanted to share that now we're transitioning, well, this summer, we started transitioning to a broader, like, health and equity organization. And so we're working to build off of the network of partners we've developed to help bridge the gap, uh, between residents and providers, um, help overcome barriers to services, advocate to bring needed resources to the community, um, and also develop local residential leaders. Um, our goals for our next year is we wanna reduce the rate of uninsured clients that we see, uh, folks that we work with, help them get healthcare coverage. And, um, you know, that will lead to fewer urgent care visits, people being able to access more preventative care and that sort of stuff. Um, so, yes, and we are also hoping to set up a physical location in Lululea. Hopefully, early in the spring, we're still looking for a space. The space we had looked at, uh, the building has worse issues than we thought, unfortunately. So we're looking for a space, but that would be, um, a community health resource center for folks to stop in and get connected with whatever they need. Um, but yes, I just keep it short, 'cause I know we're in the public comments period. Um, but yeah, just wanted to introduce who we are and so we can work together more in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hear you mentioned sport also.
You heard the long speech too.
Yes. Is there anyone else that wants to connect? I guess everybody's not. Okay, so we will move on to new business. Um, so this is discussion, possible action on a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-two tax rule. And this came in after we had already posted the agenda for the last meeting. This is something brand new that the county hasn't done before. And so Adrian's going to explain what's going on here.
So, um, as we did pass the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, there's a line item that we have is how much we project to receive in property taxes in this coming year. This levy, final levy, I believe was the name of the document they put in page six in your packet, it's levy totals, is adding up the property values of the land, structures, and non-real properties, um, including agriculture, taxing, and, uh, frozen taxes. What the county is asking for us to turn into them is us affirming that their assessed tax rates that they've put on everybody in Martindale, all six hundred and eighty, I believe. Count is, can't read very well here. Yeah, six hundred and eighty entities, um, tax is, the total will be three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, just about that city of Martindale has been, will be billing the residents of Martindale. We've already, uh, expected this during our, um, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. So Jared had put this out in line item five thousand six hundred. If I could get off full screen, I'll show you guys here.
Quick question, what, what did we have last year?
Last year we had. Our projection last year was about.
Three sixty-five?
Hmm, I don't know.
Okay.
There you go. Three hundred and forty-five thousand.
That's confirmed, we actually got that amount.
Um, no, actually, that is the projected. I didn't get to the right number.
Twenty-one, that's what we actually got.
But we got about.
That, that looks like the actual.
Yeah.
Because, because our projected for twenty twenty-two is three forty-five, seven twenty-six.
What we received.
What we received, yeah, it's about that much. But every year, we expect to not collect a one percent. And so.
So it's up about forty thousand.
Right, so just, you, you can't collect everything.
Yeah.
So there's one percent, um, reduction of the total, three seventy. This year, our projection that we would collect two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Last year, we projected we'd collect about three hundred and forty-five thousand. But the total the county says that we should collect if we reach a hundred percent success is three hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, are we, before we receive the total amount the county says that we will, we'll be receiving is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand? So we're about ninety-nine point six percent accuracy on, uh, what we expect to collect still within that one percent range. So the only motion that we're looking for from city council today is approving the rate that, uh, the county has given us, how much we expect to collect this year? It's nothing more than a, than us approving their work, which we also, our math matches their math essentially.
You had said in your presentation that, I think you said the city of Martindale is billing?
Well, the, the county collects the tax, the property taxes of everybody in the, in the city, including even non-taxable items, well, not, not that, non-real items, so items that can, like, vote, to go vote, you have to write down on your taxes, for instance. That's included in the three hundred and seventy thousand. And so everybody's land is assessed, how much it's worth, they add it all up. It's in page six of your, in your packets. Um, there's the breakdown of the land, the structures, and non-real property.
But the appraisal district is actually billing?
That's right.
Okay.
But we'll be collecting that money.
And this.
So the county's actually doing the billing. We're not gonna bill.
Yes, yes, that's right. The county bills it, we collect it.
They not bill it.
They, they actually collect it. The county collects it.
Yes.
Right.
And they reverse that.
And this resolution is something that they've never asked us to do before, but when we look at the numbers, they're very, very close. And so it's just a formality at this point.
Obvious, okay.
In case there's like, like a description, a discrepancy.
Yeah.
So if we expected to receive three hundred and fifty thousand and the county says you're gonna receive four hundred thousand, there's a fifty thousand dollar difference.
Right.
But our math is, my mother knows.
Yeah.
So you need to make a motion to approve?
That's right.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two tax rule.
Okay.
Are you approving the resolution?
Yeah, we, the resolution.
Sign in your resolution.
So, so two point, two point one?
Resolution, twenty twenty-two tax rule.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion, um, to approve the resolution of the twenty twenty-two tax rule.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? If there is, then, uh, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Sonia? Okay, so the motion carries. No, no, not that, it's totally.
No, but this is so sad.
Okay, that's.
It's property tax. Okay.
Okay, so moving on to two point two is about the engine exhaust braking system that Mr. Murdoch was, um, speaking about. We, uh, we, not me, I mean, Adrian has put together a, an ordinance proposing, uh, that the, uh, these brakes not be used within the city limit. I believe Lululea does allow these brakes.
Right, Lululea, San Marcos, and various municipalities, we just don't have to have one.
Chief here?
Yes.
Um, yes, question on these exhaust brakes. Where do you hear in these exhaust brakes, mostly at lights? Is it traffic?
Yeah, they're coming up, they, they would use it if they're coming up to a red light or something like that, but usually on hills.
Going downhill or some.
Right.
But here it's pretty flat, so this gentleman, is it mostly, you hear it at light at the intersections?
Yeah, anywhere the truck's gonna, uh, use its brakes.
Is it, where, where does the worst probably?
Well, where I hear it is, of course, near my house, which is the intersection of one forty-two.
Yeah, okay, that's a, that's pretty odd.
It happens at each road.
I hear it coming down even one forty-two.
Thanks, well, that's good.
But where do you hear that coming in? They're not gonna stop anywhere like.
At the intersection.
Oh, the intersection, okay.
Coming down that hill and, yeah, I hear, I hear it all the time, yeah.
Could, could you talk briefly about enforcement or warning? Or how do you, I mean, are you just gonna follow app, app after truck and then give them?
Well, no, if they use their, if they use their jet brakes when we hear it, then we can pull them over and write them a, 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 a violation for using their jet brake or using their. It'd be the same as any other traffic stop that would be.
And so the maximum fine is not to exceed five hundred dollars?
That's it by the government code.
Okay, and you could.
But we just gotta be in our presence or view, so we can't just take it. So we gotta, we gotta physically be there if they, when they do that. There's gotta be, it's like a speeder, you can't just write someone speeding ticket if we don't see it or verify it.
But we would be putting up signs.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not.
That signage, I think, will help a lot. Once they see the signage and see that they can't use it here, they know that they can't use it, or they can't use it.
They're used to it.
Yeah, in your packet, there's an example of this on it.
It's.
So as soon as a truck would approach the city limits, say at nineteen eighty-four, uh, or wherever, do, do you happen to have a map of the city?
I could get a map.
Yeah, so we could just see exactly where, uh, the signs will be placed?
So they, they would be put probably on the, on the city limit sign is what I, where I would suggest. Put them on the city limit, so, so when they're coming in on the south end or the north end, uh, they see it. So anyone coming up to, uh, in, anyone coming up to nineteen eighty-four, that's outside the city limits anyway. We can't enforce that. So if they use it coming up to that nineteen eighty-four, uh, red light, we cannot enforce that on the other side of that, on the, on the north side of that. But anything past that, uh, we can enforce.
Probably, both ends of the highways probably be the best place to put it. Any other entry points of the cities where we place these signs, probably have more.
About nineteen seventy-nine?
Right, so we'll put them on this end of the highway, this end of the highway, entering nineteen seventy-nine.
They're not gonna use their jet brake, I don't think, on nineteen seventy-nine, because there, there's a stop sign there. They gotta actually physically stop. They're not gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Use it on nineteen seventy-nine, so they gotta physically use their brakes anyway. So where they're using it is when they gotta just slow down enough to get to an intersection. Go ahead, Sam.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay, when I talked to Mr. Russ about this, uh, he suggested that you might put them at the city limit signs, but also any, anywhere else within the city limits, where, uh, trucks normally do that, use that brake coming up to the intersection like the one that you did.
Okay, one forty-two?
Is it, is it mostly gravel trucks you see them, or is it all of?
I think so.
Well, we have a lot of commerce trucks, semis coming through as well. So it would be on West Ridge or before West Ridge, right on the corner of that pink, uh, R-two zoning of West Ridge, or R, R-two.
Do we need to zoom in?
Uh, no, I can sort of see it there, right on, on that corner.
That's where the city limit sign is, just about right here, in twenty feet south of West, no, it's not even down that far. It's in the green, it's about, right there. Because we don't have the, the highway.
Yeah, oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Oh, and then just, uh, it's just inside nineteen eighty-four, the other one.
So it sounds like we might have to have a s, one, and then a second sign in between Ayton, uh, West Ridge and one forty-two, because they could miss that one sign on the city limit sign, or they could claim to, in the blink, blink of an eye. So it sounds like we might need one, two, maybe four signs.
Who's gonna put any sign up?
We hire a handyman.
Yeah, so we, we're gonna tell them where to put it.
Um, I'm looking here on the read ahead that we're looking at maybe spending a hundred and forty-four dollars.
Yeah.
On signs.
Just about. But it shouldn't, wouldn't be any crazy expenses.
Right, I mean, we'll have one speed limit sign when either end, they'll talk, tell me down there, so I mean.
My, my guess is there's some well-defined regulations from Tech Dot down on, I just basically.
Uh, Tom, your experience, do, do both cities do the city limit signs? They do, they do it like coming in and going out?
Yeah, you're gonna put your ordinance.
Probably not going out, 'cause then you can't.
Just come in and use.
Come into the city.
How we in both ways?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the price here looks like, uh, one forty-four, but that's just for two signs.
So it'll be two hundred and eighty-eight for four. I'm sure we'll get however many signs we need.
Yeah.
I'm sure the officer is gonna tell us, or Lee will tell us exactly where to put them, and I think it'll be fine, so I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion. I would like to make a motion to pass the adoption of ninety-one point zero five of the engine exhaust braking system, of the motion of the Martindale City Council to prevent the use of an engine braking system while operating a motor vehicle within the corporate limits of the city, under ninety-one public nuisance of the Martindale City Code of Order.
I, I say acknowledge.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, if not, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. And is there anything else to add to future items? We have been working very hard, but we just, on several different ordinances, but we just didn't have them quite ready. The next meeting is going to be a gutbuster.
Crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, does our, do the holiday schedule?
Uh, no, we're still working on it.
Oh, okay.
Well, we'll tell you also, I'm, I'm doing something from the police department side. I'm gonna send both officers to training for DOT, to be a DOT inspector. It's hard to pull over the trucks and, and not know what you're looking at. You have to, to mark your transportation.
Okay.
So whenever you pull over a truck for a violation like this, you go up there and there's probably a ton of violations on that vehicle.
Sure.
But if we're only looking at one thing, so, you know, we can, we could actually write for a whole lot more if we sent someone to that DOT, uh, training, but it's gotta, you gotta be effectively certified.
Right.
You gotta be certified to be able to do that and do those inspections and so forth. And we have the Leo spawns already, so we have the fun.
Cool.
But that may let the truckers know that, hey, we're sitting here looking at them on eight, ten, eight, some of that stuff.
That's a good suggestion. Good, wait, what's your record, what's your record last week or so on speed? I don't even know.
Yeah, that, that, it says on regular.
We're gonna be on alert again.
This is.
I just had one more question about the sign.
Not doing the police report, we're not doing the police report.
Is it all right to ask a question about the sign?
Sure.
Okay, um, are they gonna be attached with like breakaway bolts or, or are they set in concrete or?
I'd put it to the existing pole. I wouldn't.
Oh, I, I see, okay. But we may need, as you said, maybe a couple in between the.
I would go on all city limits.
Okay.
Because you're gonna clutter up the roadway with just different signs.
Yes.
We, like, like I was trying to say, we only have one fifty-five mile an hour speed limit on either end.
Okay.
And then when it drops.
So. I have Lee on the line here. Uh, he sends us a message that the sign's location would be determined by Tech Dot. It wouldn't be placed on the same pole as the city limits. Should Tech Dot approve it, else he's, he'll start the permit process with Tech Dot.
Good.
Lee.
He said it does go in the same poles as.
No.
Make sure they come in here. I can't zoom in any further, Lee.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great.
I was gonna explain a little bit about the green tag ordinance that we have on here. Um, what that is, is, um, saying that we have somebody who starts building or brings in a mobile home or something like that into the city. Um, and we let them know, hey, you have to get permits or whatever. The green tag ordinance would, uh, not allow the electric company to supply electricity to that property until the property owner has gotten the, uh, right permits. And this is something that we really are gonna need, and we'll have this available within the next week or so. We've been working on that one.
Wonder why it's not called a red tag instead of a green tag? Green, I mean, you'd think it'd be called a red tag to stop and a green tag.
To go, I don't.
It's called the green tag ordinance then. Is that our own ordinance?
Well, it's when the electric company would see the green tag that they would know, I think is what it was, that they can supply, uh, electric pole and electricity to something. But, uh, we have had trouble with this, where people go in and they start working and they even get electricity before they even come to get permits. So we have to have a way to let the, the blue on it know, hey, don't give them electricity until, you know, they have the proper permits, have, if they need to replat or whatever it is that they need to do.
Um, so what, what are these gonna be on this week? Any of those?
Um, we're working on several, so what, what's the utilities?
I think, uh, just because like I'm confused, 'cause I thought since it was future agenda items, like, we don't have discussion on them.
Yeah.
Now we're starting to get into discussion, 'cause if we're gonna go there, then there's questions I would like to ask too, but.
Yeah, I think it's interesting.
If anyone has questions on the preparation of future agenda, feel free to contact me. I gave you a brief of each of the agenda items, of where they stand, um, any other policy, any other documents that we might have ready for it. Uh, if anybody has anything to recommend to be on the agenda, that'd be a great time. If not, then we can seek to close the meeting.
Yeah, the RV ordinance, I think, needs, needs to be looked at too. RV or ordinance in the city limits. There's more RVs in our city limits, uh, currently. One moved in, one moved out, and all that. The park. One moved in, one moved out, and all that, um, the park or ordinance, I, I see up, up there, but we need to start to talk about how much money the park would charge for, say, a jumpy house, or a party, or any, any, any of, of, of those things, because in, in our current ordinance, it is not a monetary amount that's specified, so I, I, I would like to have that spoken
The board, it wasn't the board gonna work on that one?
Maybe.
That's a good idea.
I think we should start to talk about it too, please. I think that's all I can think of.
Uh, there's one more thing that I need clarity on is, I appreciate, um, your updates, uh, during public comments, and they're very insightful and very informative, but with that being like a report, in order for us to ask questions during it, wouldn't it have to be during the reporting? Like, if we did have questions, is it a public comment, or is it a report?
When, we have Ms. Harper, she's, it's a public comment, you can sit here and talk about any, you can talk about the Astros like you like, in public comment, you can talk about anything really.
I was prayer.
Anything, anything, really, you can report anything to City Council, as long as it's done in a very civil manner.
I know, it's just with, like, with organizations, or with something like, if we, we wanted to ask more questions about anything, then public comments, we couldn't, we couldn't do that.
No, you frankly shouldn't interrupt.
To catch you outside.
Yes, or email the library, I'm sure you can find their contact online and ask their questions. Could I believe this is close for the City Council?
If it's just generic public comments, like stuff that I bring, if you got questions to ask, if I can answer. Something's on the agenda, like the gentleman that was talking about the jet brakes, uh, y'all wouldn't wanna make the comment back to him if you fix the comment, uh, back on his initiative, that's what your public comments is.
So, if you'd like to see reports from the library, maybe down the line, we could negotiate a contract to have a semi-annual
I was just, I was just wondering, just, yeah.
Of course, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion when you're done.
A second there.
Okay, all in favor, please. All right.